We're gonna have to make a mask announcement at the beginning of this meeting. Do you want Dave to do it, me to do it, or you to do it? Because there are people here that can't understand the law for some.
Pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, can you hear me? The ten, colon, four, dash, ten, adequate notice of the meeting has been provided by advertising such notice in the home news, Tribune, the Asbury Park Press, the Board Office, the schools, and on cable, Vision Channel one eighteen and Verizon Files Channel twenty-four, and by filing such notice with the township clerk. This meeting was scheduled for Tuesday, February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. The board will take formal action on payment on bills and other agenda items. Joseph?
Thank you, Mr. Weber. The Olbridge Township Board of Education acknowledges that the law of this state establishes that members of the public, including members of the board, have the right to record public board meetings using audio or video recording devices, provided that that act of recording does not interfere with the business of this public board meeting. The board therefore takes it, I'm sorry, therefore the board makes it known that any such recording is to be considered a private recording of the individual, and in no manner represents the official record of this board. The board therefore takes no responsibility for such private recording and completely disavows any future use.
Thank you. Roll call.
Ms. Burns?
Here.
Ms. Callie?
Here.
Mr. Carroll?
Here.
Mr. Giordano?
Here.
Ms. Lent? Mr. Marqueta?
Here.
Mr. Slade?
Here.
Mr. Solikowski?
Here.
Mr. Weber?
Here.
Quorum exists?
All right, we'll please everybody rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, would one of the board members care to read the district's firm? Yeah. And we now have more than balance. Okay. Ms. Burns?
Okay. Code of Ethics Corner, the board member confines his/her board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal, and help to frame policies and plans only after the board has consulted those who will be affected by them.
Thank you. For those of you who have not been here before, there are, I think, there are twelve Code of Ethics, which is set by the state, and we chose to read one of them at each of the meetings to keep those available and in front of the public as well. All right, that's followed by district goals. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of January sixth, the organization meeting? Do them all at once. All right, we'll move all of them. The four of them are the agenda session of the regular meeting for January eleventh, the regular meeting for January eighteenth, and a closed session for January eighteenth. Is there a motion to accept?
Burns will make the motion.
I'll second it. Discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Marqueta?
Yes.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Solikowski?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Resolution one passes.
Okay. Tony, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. On January twenty-fourth, we announced our seniors of the month, Arush Said and Humphrey Bodie. The form for nominations are currently open for our February senior of the month. Student Senate just finished collecting coats for our coat drive. All the coats will be donated to the Emanuel Foundation. Chinese Honor Society held a Lunar New Year Gala last week, where attendees had a three-course Chinese dinner and experienced authentic Chinese arts and cultural performances. Spanish Honor Society is collecting change, and all donations will go to help provide clean water to remote communities. Our Soul Food Event will take place on the twenty-fourth. Environmental Club, FBLA, and German Honor Society sold roses, chocolates, and candy for Valentine's Day. Student Senate and Mrs. Abdiq's students worked very hard, cutting out and staying after, to place a red heart on everyone's locker. The hearts read, "You are amazing, and you are special." During all lunch periods, Student Senate ran a table where each student wrote why they are amazing and special on a piece of paper, which then got pieced together to make a school-wide link of love. After writing the message, we had games for the students with the chance to win candy and other prizes. Math Honor Society held their induction ceremony last month, and now English and History Honor Society are holding their induction ceremony tomorrow. English Honor Society decorated the English hallway doors by including pictures and facts of African-American literary figures to celebrate Black History Month. The class of two thousand and twenty-three will be hosting a talent show on Thursday, February seventeenth. Student Senate, in conjunction with Spanish Honor Society, will be hosting a senior karaoke night on Tuesday, the twenty-second. Girl Swim Team dominated the GMCs, becoming two-time champions. Congratulations to wrestler Gabby Miller on becoming the South Region Champion. Our Unified Generation Basketball Team played Edison during school hours, and the stands were packed of encouraging Olbridge phys ed students. Thank you to Coach Lonzo Fama for leading our Olbridge football team for an outstanding twelve years. The winter sports season is winding down. Good luck to all teams in the postseason, and the spring, and the spring sports season begins on March seventh. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we're gonna accept this from the board. No, you don't. Okay, all right. Recognition. Mr. Sidedino, would you care to give him?
Thank you, Mr. President. Our first recognition today is another fine project from a local Boy Scout who is working towards his Eagle Scout honors. I think we have a very fine program with our local scouts in which they often seek the approval of our schools, our school sites, to put a project together to satisfy that honor. It's a very good relationship that we have. I know a lot of school districts and scouts don't have that type of relationship, and we welcome their volunteerism and their civic responsibility. At this time, I'd like to call up Daniel Machen and his scout leaders, and as many scouts who want to support him up here, his family, at this time, so I could read the motion. Daniel? Oh, there you are. Come on up. You guys can all gather around. Move the board to recognize Daniel Machen, a twelfth grader at Olbridge High School, for completing his Eagle Scout project. Daniel completed his project at Voorhees Elementary School during the pandemic, making and donating picnic tables and a beautification of two large planters in the alphabet garden. Daniel has added pavers around the bushes by the building and secured mulch and gravel by a rainspout. The addition of the picnic tables provides a lovely place for outdoor dining, outdoor classrooms, for all of the Voorhees students in their garden area. Daniel, I'm gonna hold up a plaque, but I also want to show the people at home and in our audience the picture of the project that you did. Very nice job, and thank you for assisting us. You can get closer. It's tough when the scouts are taller than you. But thank you very much, and as you can see, it's not easy work, and you guys have a lot to look forward to, but Daniel really paved the way for you, so to speak, on showing you how to do it. So, great job. Thank you very much. Do we have representatives here from Giuseppe? Is that enough? Carlo's here? Come on up, bud. Good buddy, how are you? So, those of you who don't know Carlo, and I don't know how that can be, Carlo is a mainstay in the Olbridge community. He is the proprietor of Giuseppe's Pizzeria, and he's always one of the people who comes forward and says, "How can I help? What can I do?" And it's not just in the schools, out in the community as well. I know that he's volunteered his efforts, his time, his proceeds to help out many charitable organizations, especially specifically those that help children. So, it's at this time, the board would like to recognize Giuseppe's Pizza for providing lunch for twenty-five Olbridge School public school nurses as a way of saying thank you to the meaningful difference they make in our schools. This generous donation to acknowledge our twenty-five district nurses who work tirelessly to keep schools healthy and safe was coordinated by Mrs. Kimberly Sautner, Guidance Counselor at Memorial School, Mrs. Kristen Todd Matos, Guidance Counselor Sheraw School, Dr. Raymond Peyton, Principal Memorial School, Mrs. Karen Hicks, Supervisor of Nursing Services, Ms. Daniel Perro, Physical Education Teacher, Memorial School, Ms. Courtney Lauer, Principal at Sheraw School, and Ms. Jennifer Hagan, Super Special Education Teacher at Memorial School. Today, I'm going to present Carla with our Hero of Olbridge Schools pin, and thank you for everything you've done for our schools and our community. You want to say anything? Any shameless plugs?
Thank you so much. I really appreciate this. Can't do it without you. I appreciate the support constantly, and I'm really proud to be in this town. I mean, thank you so much.
Thank you for making a difference.
Recognition.
I move recognition, Frank.
Right, I'll second it. Roll call.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes, I just wanted to also congratulate Daniel. What a wonderful project that you completed. And Carlo, you know, you and Giuseppe's are the best. Congratulations to you. Thank you. Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Marqueta?
Yes.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Solikowski?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Callie?
Yeah, it seems like we skipped over discussion, so if Daniel's still here, I just wanted to congratulate him. That's quite an accomplishment while keeping up with your schoolwork, and we're all very proud of you. And Carlo, can't see behind the curtain, if you're still here, thank you and Giuseppe's for everything you do. As somebody who's volunteered here for more years than I can count, I know that you're always there whenever called upon, and when you're not called upon, you're always there. So, thank you so much for everything you do for our district. Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Resolutions one and two pass.
Dave?
For our superintendent's report today, we recognize Black History Month in our schools, and our supervisor of Social Studies and Secondary English, Mr. Rocco Santano, will provide us with a presentation of thus far throughout the course of the month of February, how our schools and our students have recognized the many numerous contributions of Black residents nationally, internationally, and locally, who have made a major contribution to our society. Thank you, Mr. Santano.
Good evening, everyone. February is Black History Month, and teachers and students across the district are finding creative and interesting ways to commemorate the achievements of African-Americans to our society and our culture. The way we teach Black History Month, we use our, we bring to bear all the sources that we have in our school district, all the things that, whether it's, you know, handheld text, whether it's platforms of electronic, of the electronic kind, virtual platforms, you know, things like Nearpod, Newsela, these are all things that we kind of bring to bear. But the thing you have to understand that Black History Month is about the teachable moment to reinforce skills and to teach new skills that we do in our English classes and our history classes, primarily reading and writing. So, here are some of the things that you could see as you revisit some of our schools throughout the district. This here is from Cooper School. This is a third-grade project. The project was set up by Kristen Machen and Jennifer Sullivan. What they did was they put students in pairs, and they researched historical figures, and then put them together in a project. And as you can see, it's the person on the outside. You open it up, and there's the whole biography of the student. You can see more reading and writing here in schools across the district. Again, this is another Cooper School with the one about Jackie Robinson. These other pictures are hanging on the walls at Miller School. Again, researching major figures, African-American heroes, African-American people who've made a difference in our society, and writing small little tidbits about them. All of this research are done by our elementary school students. Here's some more elementary school stuff. Carpenter School, they went digital, and they did their research projects, researching African-American leaders and famous figures, and then put them together in a PowerPoint. This one here, if you take a look at the two about King Oliver and Louis Armstrong, this comes from Heather Sawyer's class, fourth grade in Carpenter School. And these are some more from Miller School hanging along the walls for their kindergarten students. At McDivitt, every year, they do a door decorating competition. They ask administrators throughout the district to come and judge and see which, and it's all based on a theme. This year, the theme was on Black History Month, and these are some of the doors that were decorated and some of the hallways that you can see here. Again, focusing on African-American figures, but again, all of these things are researched, looking at reading and writing and ways of communicating about, you know, things that they look at, things that they research. In middle school, Sandberg and Salk Schools, again, reinforce that idea that African-American history is a part of American history and is researched and written about. And you can see here on the left is an essay prompt for an informative essay. This is in Mrs. Hoff's class at Salk School, where they do a research paper. They actually go out and, you know, are encouraged to go to the public library, go out and take and look across the digital world and find information about a particular figure that they could write about. On the right side is a history project, again, about, you know, looking at specific events or individuals in, in American history, African-Americans who made a difference. And here are some of the finished products, some of the things that are made into PowerPoints that are presented to the class. Okay, finally, in our high school, again, there is, in the English and Social Studies classes, there's focus, particularly on topics that are related to their courses, and particularly at the high school, which I'll show you in a minute, a real focus on African-American writers. Some of these things are digital, and you can see this is for Mr. Magnus in the civics class, looking at some of the court cases that made a difference in civil rights as part of Black History Month. These here are from World History Class, grade nine. This is Mrs. Waldman. She did a really interesting thing. She went and found an app where they actually take pictures of, you know, from art museums, and then she transfers them into pieces of paper, prints them out, and then the students then color them in. In this project, they were looking at major figures in world history who are either from Africa or African-Americans, and they wrote, you know, biographies and things about them, and the one on the bottom there, that's my daughter's. She's a grade nine student, so I had to do that for her. Okay, and that's one more project, and again, Musical Mondays, again, all about looking at, at things. This is in a drama class. So, even in a drama classes, we're talking about reading and writing and discussing events. Finally, is in English. The English Honor Society, as it was mentioned before, decided to put together a, what was, what we call a gallery walk. And the English Honor Society went in all the English rooms throughout Olbridge High School, the main campus, and decorated doors, each with a specific, in mind, specific writers, or African-American writers, or major people who are poets, who are African-American leaders. And the door decorating was done, and on top of that, if you take a look here, you'll see some of the figures. Again, Lorraine Hansberry, August Wilson, James Baldwin. And if you can see here in the nightly wrap-up, it was, again, reviewed in the nightly wrap-up. But if you take a look, in the one picture, there is a QR code. So, the students were encouraged, English classes were encouraged to walk through the gallery, use their phones, and get the QR code, and then they would find a whole history on that particular author or poet. And then from there, teachers would give them assignments, and they would, they actually would do things through our Microsoft Teams platforms and through Microsoft Forms to answer some questions. And so you can see, we do, we celebrate, we commemorate African-Americans this month, but we do it in a way where we make sure that all of the things that we focus on in English, in Social Studies, reading and writing, good research, are being done at the same time. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Santano. In our progress towards goals, this presentation was inspired by board member Slade. He asked a question, threw an email to me, just curiosity, and I think it was based upon some of the conversations he had with members of the community in reference to, throughout the course of the pandemic and the time since we've returned, what do we know about the outcomes of students on screen time? What did we learn from that? What kind of data can we glean from the work that transitioned from in-person work to online work, and what does the future of it look like as we move forward through the twenty-first century? Dr. Tuohy is gonna lead us through this. Thank you, Dr. Tuohy.
Good evening, everybody. This is a brief overview of some of the online resources that the district has procured over the course of the past three years, as we have two years, it seems like three years, that we started this pandemic back in March. Some of these are items that are used quite frequently in the classroom, and they're different, they're used differently across various different grade levels. So, we'll go into what some of the expectations are for technology use across the various grade levels, elementary, middle, and high school. The rationale tonight, again, for Mr. Slade, who brought this question up originally, was to provide a brief overview of some of the online materials utilized by students and staff throughout the districts. There is three topics to be discussed tonight. What are some primary online and secondary online resources that we utilize on a daily basis here in Olbridge Township Public Schools? Some of the instructional expectations by grade level, and then an overview of some of the online resource usage programs, reports, that we see, and you probably see every day with your students, including Microsoft Teams, Savis, iXL, Nearpod, and Newsela. What this presentation is not, it is not a snapshot into what your children are doing every single day and gives you an exact breakdown of the technology that they are using. For many of you who have an iPhone, you can log on and specifically see how much time that you are on that on a daily basis. Yesterday, I was on for Information and Reading for an hour and fifty-two minutes because Wordle was very difficult. So, and if you're doing Wordle, I mean, it's an excellent tool. It's very fun to do, but I couldn't get it yesterday, so I was on extra long. So, this is not gonna give you a exact look into your child's classroom. It is meant to provide you with an overview of some of the resources that you have on a daily basis and your children have access to over the course of the day. One of the important aspects to keep in mind when reviewing this information is that each teacher is going to use these resources a little differently, depending on the class, the grade level, the subject matter. Again, each, each teacher and their own take on how to present the information, it is gonna be different for each respective teacher, and that's just something to keep in mind as we look through this presentation. So, primary online resource that we use, everyone knows Microsoft Teams, and we use the full Office Suite here, including Teams, OneNote, Forms, et cetera. We also use Savis Math, which is formerly in Visions, which is K through eight. Think Central, which is our Journeys online program or ELA program, which is ELA K through five. We use iXL for ELA K through twelve, Math K through twelve, and Science two through five. EasyCBM for Response to Intervention, specifically for grades K through five benchmarking. Newsela for grades six through twelve. Quaver Music, which is our primary form to provide music instruction at the elementary level. Naviance, which does all of our college programming for the high school, high school students, grades nine through twelve. HMH Online Science Services, Savis for Environmental Science, and we have an online biology textbook. This is a little small, and I apologize in advance for that, but I did try and color coordinate to describe a little bit, some of the differences between the expectations on the various grade levels. And again, this presentation will be available online tomorrow for anyone who has any questions or concerns. Across all three grade levels, though, they, everyone has an access to a stream, kindergarten through grade twelve. In some cases, the computers are a little different based on the needs of the respective students, whether it's elementary, which a little bit more. students, whether it's elementary, which a little bit more uses the, the device is a little bit less, up to the high school where they're using devices practically every day. On the elementary level, Microsoft Teams is used primarily for the provision of assignments and weekly overview of teacher plans. We use iXL for our math benchmarking, which is done online, but we use EasyCBM for ELA benchmarking, which is done in person with the teacher. The students have access to math and ELA textbooks and assignments through Savis and Think Central, but primarily elementary utilizes workbooks and hardcover textbooks, as well as manipulas for the instruction within the classroom. We also have continued development of our maker spaces in our elementary libraries. These are areas where students can go and experience some of the newest technologies, while not necessarily utilizing that in the classroom. We weren't able to do this for the past two years just because of the ongoing pandemic, but we are not only opening up four more, hopefully four more additional maker spaces throughout the elementary schools, but we're going to continue using the ones that are already in place at Madison Park and some of the other locations. And for Science and Social Studies, our primary method of instruction on the elementary level is the use of online resources, including iXL for grades 2 through 5 for Science, and then Newzella for K through 5, and that's on the elementary. Some of the differences between elementary and middle school include Microsoft, the Microsoft Suite is used a little bit more broadly in the middle school, as is with the high school. There is access to math and science textbooks in our middle school settings. We, in some cases, move away from some of those workbook and textbook resources that are utilized at the elementary level. We are also utilizing trade books on, for our ELA instruction, as well as guided readers. And we have implementation of science labs, specifically Gizmos, which was an online science lab activity that we discovered during the course of the pandemic. Obviously, students weren't sharing materials, beakers, and other items during their middle school and high school labs. So the district did contract with an online service called Gizmos, which gives the students a semi-realistic lab experience, which prior to that point, they weren't able to do. At the high school, we are primarily using Microsoft Teams. It is our, our way to communicate with the students. The expectations are much different at the high school than they would be at the elementary and middle school levels. And not only is there a higher expectation of technology integration on a day-to-day basis with the, with the students, but also with the staff as you move through. And again, we all have experienced this in high school, where every high school teacher thinks their subject is the most important, and rightfully so. I'm a former social studies teacher, social studies is the best. But for all of those people who are subject-oriented, there are apps that go along with your respective subject area, which is utilized more, which will be utilized more heavily based on the respective teacher who's using, who's providing that instruction in that course area. Supplementary materials are extensive. Some of these are purchased, some of these are free. These are all items that are accessible across various grade levels, but their use is based on the needs of the class, the needs of the teacher, and some of the ways that the teacher is approaching the instruction on a day-to-day basis. Again, I won't read these to you, but this will be available online if you want to get a closer look at any of these resources, starting tomorrow. And just a brief resource review for those of you, and these are just some of the five main areas we were able to pull data from. And I have to thank, she's in the crowd today, Ms. Sweeter, who helped out, providing an overview of the Savis program. So I did say that I was going to reference her, and she's here today, which is great. So thank you, Mrs. Sweeter. So, Microsoft Teams. Our Microsoft Team usage is all types of communication district-wide. It's teacher-to-student interaction, student collaboration, especially at the high school level, when you're talking about group work or peer review. Our coaches all have team pages, and they utilize their team pages to communicate with their student athletes. At the beginning of the year, we were using it for home instruction. We were also using it for classroom access for quarantined students. We have administrator and teacher meetings, we have general staff meetings, RTI, CST, speech language specialist meetings, instructional leadership team, et cetera, and also distribution of lesson materials for students who are home with illness. Just some basic numbers to provide the staff, so just to give you a broad understanding of what we do with Microsoft Teams. Since the beginning of the school year, we have had 29,058 total meetings done over our Microsoft Teams platform. That equates to, during those meetings, upwards of 13,000 hours of screen sharing. And screen sharing is basically when you're doing a presentation, you're sharing your screen, we all know this at this point, if you haven't found Zoom yet, you might have lost out. There's also 429,000 chat messages that go back and forth. This is done between the teachers and the students. That's also done between student and student under our staff, our watchful eye of the staff. And then there are sub-channels that you can use in each one of the Teams pages, and there were over 100,000 separate channel messages and breakout groups that were utilized during the course of just this first half of the year through the end of January. This gives a little bit of a more visual understanding of what we utilize Teams for. As you can see, there were two huge spikes, and if anybody can guess what those are, we've got a door prize. Nice job. Yes. Parent-teacher conferences were in September, and December was, oh no, I'm sorry, Back to School Night was parent, was in September, and then parent-teacher conference was in December. I don't have a door prize with me, but I will try and get one to you as soon as possible. All right, thank you. So, it's listed on there too, so I'm glad you read ahead. The meetings included holiday breaks, which were available as well, and then relative consistency from the rest of the meetings that we've had over the course of the year. And again, Microsoft Team usage is one of the staples that you're going to see from now until probably your students graduate from high school. Savis is the math and science resources. They, the last column there is the one to really focus on. It generates from the lowest amount to the highest amount as the students continue on from 1st grade through 5th grade. The number of assigned activities goes from about 10,000 to about 30,000 different assigned items. And then subsequent to that, there are completed assignments that are associated with each one of those respective assignments provided by the teachers. At the middle school, it goes from about 24,000 in 6th grade to 36,000 in 7th grade, and finally ends up with about 12,000 assigned activities. These are not all activities that your students are completing. These are assigned activities that are outlined by the teacher, and then they can be further examined through the instructional methods utilized by your, by your teachers in the classroom. We also use iXL. Again, that's our primary benchmark assessment for middle school as well as high school. It also ties in with the Envision software, the Savis software, and it's utilized both in-class across all of our elementary buildings, as well as our middle school buildings and our high school, and is used both in, in-school for supplementary instruction, and also used after-school for homework assignments and activities. Newzella is one of our programs utilized for content. It's utilized for our English and social studies classes, and it's utilized especially at the elementary level to provide a resource for what topics are going to be discussed in the social studies classes, especially through the grades 3 through 5 in the elementary. Newzella is also used as a supplementary resource for middle school, and it's used for high school as well. It's seen utilized a lot in our civics class in the Grade Nine Center. And our Newzella usage is pretty standard over the course of the year, and we average about 500 and some odd uses during the course of each week. And then finally, NearPod. This was a new addition to our online suite for this year. NearPod is PowerPoint on steroids, for lack of a better term. It is, allows the teacher to have interactive classroom experiences. As they're going through each one of the PowerPoint presentations, the teachers can check in, they can receive summative informative assessments utilizing this particular platform. And this platform is utilized primarily to enhance the classroom experience and to ensure that the students are following along as the teacher is doing their presentation. Just in, we don't have the specific student numbers on this, but overall, it was utilized heavily in October, with about 12,751 students checked into or joined a respective session. November, December, and January had been relatively the same. And that's just a brief overview of some of the resources we utilize here in Old Bridge Township Public Schools. If you have to take any questions. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Tuohy. All right, I will, special committee reports. Does anyone have any? No one has met?
No, but I will be scheduling some committees.
Okay.
Because the, on the agenda today, we have our assignments for committees. Thank you.
And this, I'm opening this to the public on agenda items only.
Hi. Hi, good evening. I'm Stephanie Baggers. Can I talk about the inclusion resolution on the agenda? That's an agenda item, correct?
It's an agenda item, yes.
Okay, good. So first, I wanted to just say thank you. Thank you to Mrs. Burns for proposing this resolution on inclusion. It's really about the inclusion of students with disabilities in our school district. It is beautiful in, on paper, in writing. Really, the message resonates as a parent of a child with a disability in this district. I think it's fantastic. What I am asking and requesting of the Board of Education is that we look at it with a fine-tooth comb to see how we can implement it in action, to really take a look and see, do the words measure up and equal to what we're doing in our district for students with disabilities? Are they fully included? Do we have inclusive measures? Are they really part of the fabric of our school district? So, I am just asking that as a district and as a Board of Ed and administration, that we commit to taking a look at it, and as the co-leader of the Special Education Parent Advisory Group in our district, I would love to partner with you on this. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Andrew Lewis, OBA. Two questions regarding agenda items this evening. First, under policy, item number one. The Board is voting to abolish the mask policy included in the district's Road Forward Plan. Couple of questions regarding that. If the district abolishes, abolishes this policy completely, how does that impact students and staff who return on Day Six following a positive COVID test? As it currently stands, masking is required for Days 6 to 10, following the return of an individual who tests positive. If the masking is still required for these individuals, will that be possible if the policy is abolished? Additionally, how does the abolishment impact the current federal mandate related to the masking that's required on buses? As we move forward to March 7th, I think that we need to consider some important areas of focus. Personally, I believe that the best way to move forward is to revise the policy instead of completely abolishing it. It should be revised to provide limited exceptions where masking is required, and provide the Board with the opportunity to revisit the policy periodically. I also have a question related to item one of Board Secretary and Board Business. In reviewing the committee chairs and assignments for this year, I would like to know how the process is used to determine and who sits on what committees? It appears that some board members sit on many committees, while others are on just a few. There are some members who chair two or three committees, while others do not chair any. It also appears that despite there being four women who sit on the board, none are committee chairs. One is a co-chair of a committee, and it so happens to be the only committee that has a co-chair. So if you could please provide some insight into how the committees are populated, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Taking those questions backwards, Mr. Lewis, the committee process is governed by Bylaw 0155 in Old Bridge and throughout the state. It's a uniform policy, and it provides no specific structure, onto your question, as to legality of assignments. It reserves to the President, the current President, and all the former Presidents, the right to assign committee members and committee chairpersons. So there is no requirement there, there is no legal overlay on it, one of the few areas in New Jersey where we can say that. And Mr. Weber came up with the committee assignments that are in tonight's agenda. As far as the masking mandate goes, we are awaiting additional guidance from the CDC and the New Jersey Department of Health, which Governor Murphy mentioned when he gave notice that the March 7th mask mandate rescission was coming. As far as the current state of things goes, the removal of the mask mandate from your Board Policy 1648.11 and Appendix C of that simply means that there will be no ordinary masking in schools requirement, if that's the pleasure of the Board. It would be discretionary to the students, to the families, to the parents and guardians, and to all staff members, of course, and visitors, everybody. Masks cannot be prohibited, the Governor is very clear about that, but they will no longer be required by state mandate. So that's a discussion we're going to have in a couple months. As far as the bus issue goes, there is still a federal order, not guidelines, not recommendations, but an order from the Centers for Disease Control, which still require masking on public transportation, which is defined to include school buses. So yes, assuming things go as anticipated, students will be unmasked at home all day in school, but will be required to mask up on the buses. That is beyond the control of this Board. That is a, not state, but federal mandate at this point. Again, stay tuned. It is likely that that will be clarified, adjusted, or rescinded in the coming weeks, maybe in the 20 days between now and March 7th, maybe not. If it is not rescinded before then, then this school district and every other school district and every bus company will have the obligation to keep the mask mandate in place until we receive permission elsewise. As far as the quarantine rules go, again, waiting for guidance from the State Department of Health and the Federal Centers for Disease Control, but Mr. Siderino can probably speak to that a little bit too. So those are the legal issues. Did I answer all your questions, Mr. Lewis?
Dave, do you want to?
Well, if the board members take a look at their packets tonight, I included in there a, a letter that anticipates your policy action tonight. I cannot send a letter out to the public because if I had sent a letter out to the public prematurely, before you remove the policy, then I would be putting in writing a practice or policy that is not supported by policy. So if you look at it, this is a draft, but I can read it to the public and kind of speaks to what we know now and what we may know in the future. Dear Old Bridge Township Public Schools community, last week, Governor Murphy announced the statewide mask mandate in schools will be lifted effective March 7th, 2022. This announcement allows each school district to decide locally regarding masking. As you are aware, the Old Bridge Township Public Schools continuously monitors and assesses COVID-19 health data to maintain a safe educational environment. Thankfully, regional and district cases have continued to decline. As a result of the Governor's recent announcement and our favorable district-wide COVID data trends, the Old Bridge Township Public School Board of Education eliminated, again, that's if you do that, and I can modify this, if you modify your policy, eliminated school masking policy 1648, adopting a mask optional practice for students, staff, and visitors while inside a school facility, effective March 7th, 2022. Please note that the Governor also announced that additional New Jersey Department of Health guidance is forthcoming. We have yet to receive this guidance per the, per the Governor's executive order until March 7th, masks continue, must continue to be required in schools. Additionally, the federal government's mandate on public transportation, including school buses, has not yet been lifted. Updates will be provided when more information regarding masking of school buses becomes available. Thank you for your patience and partnership throughout the process as we continue to commit to deliver a healthy community of learning for all district staff and students. Be well, be kind, and believe in Old Bridge. That is the draft that is set to go out tomorrow, dependent on Board action tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Siderino. You can stay on the floor.
That's all right.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak before I close the presentation? Yes, sir.
What's your, what's his name? What's your name again? About five weeks ago, six weeks ago, you came up here pounding your chest, demanding for an apology. That a mother actually came up here and told you, the Board, about a child that the face mask was being stapled upon. And I'm sitting here, week after week, waiting for you to come up here and apologize to that parent, to that child. That child was humiliated, was fearful to even go into school because she thought you were going to be labeled a tattletale, a rat. She was embarrassed. You did that to a child. I was just waiting, and you had passion. Bang it. I demanded an apology from the Board member, from the parent. You humiliated a little girl. I'm still waiting for you to come up here and at least apologize to that girl. That's all.
All right, please. Is there anyone else? Seeing no other hands, I'll close the public portion. And we will move on to policy. Present for the first reading the following bylaws as per discussion of the January BOE meeting. Additional revisions being made to the policy 2425, Strauss SMA Alert Number 225, which is approved on December 21st, 2021. And would you care to explain it a little?
Yeah, this is, this is the Board policy that we discussed at length in the first two meetings in January. It is on the agenda tonight. It is just clarifying that in the event that is now seeming less and less likely, fortunately, that we ever have to deal with a remote educational platform again, the Superintendent will do that not unilaterally, but in connection with the Board of Education, unnoticed to everybody else. The law, the language that we talked about in January is in the Board members' packets with the underlines and crossouts according to what we talked about. So I believe everything that has been changed in here is exactly as discussed when Mr. Marqueta brought this up and we reached Board consensus to revise it. It is just a first reading tonight.
So we're going to take a motion?
No, there is no action on that tonight. There's only action on the second one, which is what Mr. Sidedino and I both just talked about, which is the abolishment of that provision or that portion of policy 1648.11, which is the in-school mask mandate language. We had discussions last week that the Board is looking to make that optional now that it is no longer a state mandate. In order to do that, you'll need to abolish that portion of your current Board policy. And because, excuse me, because that is the abolishment of, a partial abolishment of a policy, it requires only one reading, so it can be done tonight. That is also why there's kind of soft language in there talking about it being effective on March 7th, 2022 or upon the effective date of the expiration of Executive Order 281 regarding mask mandates. In other words, when it's no longer required statewide, it will no longer be required in your school district, if that's the pleasure of the Board. So you are voting on that one?
Yes. Can I have a motion moving forward? The Road Forward COVID-19 Health and Safety.
Giordano motion?
My second.
Discussion for the Board?
I do have a question. So this policy has been, you know, a situation like Hurricane Sandy has come up a few times. And I know personally I was unreachable, unreachable for two weeks during that time. Is this contingent upon every Board member being able to be reached? It's not really clear.
Two answers to that. Good question. First of all, that's not the policy we're talking about. That is policy 2524, which is the remote platform. That's just on for a first reading, not action tonight. But the answer to your question is no, it would not require Mr. Sidedino in a superstorm Sandy, the lights are out until further notice situation to have to get 9-0 contact with every Board member and support. It would be best efforts, certainly. The whole idea behind this remote education policy is that it is in an emergency. As of right now, we have very different opinions among people of what the definition of emergency is lately. However, there are other things that we can all agree on as emergencies. A blizzard is an emergency. Sandy was an emergency. Let's hope we never have to discuss that again. But Mr. Sidedino would not have to reach, if you, you know, if your power's been out for seven days, like in Sandy, and your cell phone's not working, then certainly there are people who are not reachable. Pragmatics tend to govern in real emergencies. So does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you for clarifying.
Any other discussion? Hearing none?
Yes, hi, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So I know we're all, everybody's over and done with the masks and, you know, I believe that our numbers are low and we are definitely able to lift this mandate and to abolish the mandate, I should say. However, I just want to make sure that we consider the, you know, the concerns of parents who are still afraid. I know we did get a couple of emails. And at one point, I was back and forth exchanging an email with someone who was expressing concerns. I know that they had sent an email to the whole Board. And one of the things that they had mentioned, which is kind of a moot point because we're voting on it tonight, but they had asked if we could have done a parent survey or whatever, which obviously is a moot point. But what I, I just want to let those parents know that we hear their concerns. And to that end, masking is going to be optional, but what guarantee do we have like that, okay, so a parent of a, of an elementary school child, you know, they want their child to wear their mask. Now that child comes into school and he sees other kids not wearing a mask, you know, maybe he starts to take his mask off or whatever. Is there anything that we can do to ease those parents fear, concerns, I guess, that the ones that really do want their children to continue to wear a mask? Because once, you know, once they get to school, they don't really know, you know what I mean? So is there any?
Without a mandate in place, it comes down to personal choice of the student and the family, and it'll be protected as their personal choice, just like many other articles of clothing and fashion are personal choice and protected. And if someone intimidates or harasses someone about something of personal choice in which they're wearing, they would face the code of conduct consequences. And if it's a staff, a staff member, they would have those same consequences. Or a visitor to our schools who has harassed or intimidates a staff member or a student, they would face the consequence of being considered a trespasser and not being allowed in the schools for future items and dates.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, like I said, she, this person did email all of the Board, and I did go back and forth with them. They couldn't come to a meeting to speak, so I just wanted to make sure that their concerns were heard. But that was it. Thank you.
Hey, I have a question. So regarding what Mrs. Sidedino just said, regarding other students becoming bullied through personal choices, does that also pertain to kids who aren't vaccinated? Because I know to be fact that other children have been bullying other children who aren't vaccinated, as well as some teachers trying to, I guess, push the vaccine on children who aren't vaccinated by saying, you know, my kids are vaccinated. When are you going to get vaccinated, stuff like that? So would that also be part of that, what Mr. Sidedino just said?
It would, Mr. Marqueta. The fact is that one of the good decisions that our legislature has made is that the harassment, intimidation, and bullying law talks about a distinguishing factor of a child. That could mean anything. It could certainly mean vaccination status. And if a child on either side of this wall that we have is being harassed by other students for being vaccinated or for not being vaccinated, that would be a distinguishing characteristic. And if a complaint is filed, then yes, it would go through that process and that child would be protected.
And they could do that over the online Hib reports, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
But I would just encourage, though, if you're hearing as a Board member that students are being harassed because of that, and it's, you know, obviously a concern, please bring it to my attention so I could deal with it and not have to wait till a Board meeting to hear about it. So it's happening. I can't deal with it unless I know about it.
I will, I want to do that, but at the same time, I also encourage the parents to bring it up because at that point, I don't want that child to become the subject of ridicule through the teacher or another student. You know, so I'm trying to play the guy, hey, you know what, email the administration, email other Board members, see what's going on, and I'm sure they're going to take care of it. So I don't want, I don't want to be that guy to tell them, and then it's like, all right, so-and-so's kid is now getting bullied because of something that I did.
And we can do it in general terms. So if it's like you're saying, it's happening in one school or it's happening, then we could go out and do some educational platforms. We can work with our counselors to, you know, talk to students about everyone's choices and everyone's rights and that everyone has, you know, especially in those situations, vaccinations and so forth, it really comes down to that point, like I've said many times, the parent choice. Children don't show up to pediatrician themselves to get vaccinated, so we don't want our children to be scrutinized because of a choice of their parents.
Okay, thank you.
Hopefully that all of the iterations have seemed to gotten easier as they've gone by. Not that they were very easy, but they seem to be less dangerous. And hopefully for all of us, that continues, and this probably becomes a smaller one and a smaller one. So I pray for that.
Mr. Weber?
Yes, ma'am.
I have something to say. I, I think it would be a good idea for all parents, no matter what side of this mask or vaccine issue you're on, to speak to your children. That if your child is wearing a mask, that's your child's business. If your child's not wearing a mask, that's your child's business. And it's nobody's right to bully anybody for whatever decision that they make. So it goes both ways, whether you're an anti-masker or you're for masks, you need to speak to your children.
Agreed. Anyone else? Roll call.
So we're voting on Resolution Number One. Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Marqueta?
Yes.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
And Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Resolution One, pass it.
All right, under curriculum, we have items one through five. I'll accept the motion and move all five.
I move one through five.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Discussion? Hearing none? Roll call.
Mr. Marqueta?
Yes.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Resolutions one through five.
Okay. Roman number 17, Athletics. Item is one. Accept the motion?
Marqueta will move it.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion? Hearing none?
I want, can I just say congratul-, so we're doing athletics?
Yes, sir.
All right, so congratulations to the new football coach, Donahue, and a gigantic thank you to Coach Lonzo Farmer, who I know personally, and he's a tremendous person. He's a tremendous teacher and a very good coach. So thank you, Mr. Lonzo Farmer. Good luck to Coach Donahue in the future.
I concur. Thank you to Coach Lonzo Farmer for just a great, great career as our head coach. I had a couple of kids play under him, and he was just fantastic and a great, great role model. And I'm sure that Coach Donahue will follow as well in his footsteps, so. And congratulations to the rest of the athletic coaches being named. Thank you.
I'd just like to add to that, if that's okay, Mr. Weber?
Yes.
I, I want to echo what Mr. Marqueta and Mr. Carroll said. A huge thank you to Coach Lonzo Farmer. He, I don't have boys, so they weren't in football, but I have run quite a few things through this school. While we mentioned Superstorm Sandy, one of them was the telethon to aid victims of Superstorm Sandy in this town and two surrounding towns. And one thing that will always stick out in my mind is I had volunteers lined up when somebody fell through, and Coach Lonzo Farmer, literally at 10 minutes' notice, had 20 football players who worked day and night to get that telethon put on. And that's just the type of guy he was. He not only coached these boys in football, but he coached them in life and instilled a lot of good qualities in these young men. So he will be missed, and congratulations to Mr. Donahue. Thank you.
Hearing no further discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Marqueta?
Yes.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Resolution One, pass it.
Moving on to Finance. Items one through eight, nine. Is there a motion? I'll move it. Is there a second?
Giordano, second.
Discussion on any of the items? Hearing none? Roll call.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Marqueta?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Resolutions one through nine, pass.
Non-certificated personnel operational, items A through D. Is there a rate of pay change? Is there a motion to approve it? To go forward with it rather?
Carroll will move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Giordano, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? Roll call.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Marqueta?
Yes.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Resolution One, pass.
This is item 21, Non-Certificated Personnel Other, and I'll read the item. Actually, Matt, will you read it, please?
I'll put a motion for it.
Yeah. All right, we'll have a motion first to approve, to go forward. I'll make that motion. Is there a second, Matt?
I'll second it.
Good.
Separate the number one for discussion.
Okay.
Okay, move the Board, approve the retirement of the following paraprofessional aides with deep appreciation for the years of dedicated service to the district. Donna Killian, Southwood, 26 years. Maureen Camilleri, McDivitt, 12 years. And Diane Kaziazov, if I pronounce your name, I'm sorry. Memorial, 27 years, with a total of 65 years. Ladies, thank you for your service to the district.
Any other comments? Roll call.
Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Marqueta?
Yes.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Resolutions one through 12, pass.
All right, Certified Personnel. Items one through 18. Is there a motion to go forward?
Giordano, motion?
I'll second. Discussion? Just want to look at one item here. All right. Hearing no discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Marqueta?
Yes.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Resolutions one through 18, pass.
Item 23, Non-Certificated Personnel Transportation. Two items. Have a motion. Do we have a motion to go forward? I'll move it. Is there a second?
Marqueta, second.
Any discussion on the two items? Three items, three people, two items. All right, hearing none? Roll call.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Marqueta?
Yes.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Resolutions one and two, pass.
All right, moving on to Transportation. We have items one through three. And we also refer to the item, one of that is just for, well, let's, yeah. item, one of that is just for, well, let's, yeah, let's go forward. We have a first and a second, correct?
Correct.
Now, I'll move it. Is there a second?
Giordano, second.
All right, now, item one refers to an attachment, which is E1, and I know that the, the number of bus companies that didn't fulfill an obligation, just for clarification. The, Joe, the, the amount of money is the amount of money they would have earned if they had completed the task at hand? All right?
That's correct. These are deductions from the contractual rates. Wherever they do not cover a run, and our team is required to cover that run, we deduct those daily payments from them.
Okay. And as a general result of they're not covering, does it impact in cases where we're able to fulfill them in time that the bus routes don't run late, or do we experience some lateness as well?
That results clearly in lateness sometimes because we-
All right, so I just want as a general observation, and Joe can correct me anywhere along the way, to understand that this is a universal problem throughout the state, if not the country. So that the one thing you hope is, I, I think is what, over 150 of them here, or something like that? So we had 150 routes that the contractors carried did not meet their obligation. We had to find a substitute, which in many cases is gonna result in your child getting picked up late or getting dropped off late. And that's throughout the state. It's, you know, we, we lost a lot of senior drivers around the state just because of the original fear of COVID, and that's still the way it is. I think hopefully in the future, particularly with the next iteration of COVID is mildly even than the one we just are finishing out with, that that will improve. But understand it is not something that we have the control over, that we would love to have. So I just wanna make you aware of it.
Hey Frank, just to clarify, there is a penalty or a financial penalty for lateness on routes? Is there a timeframe, Joe?
I don't believe it's on lateness, I would find it, Joe, no, because obviously these, either situations of lateness is caused by somebody not showing up, they don't get paid. That's the only penalty, as far as I know. Joe, there's nothing beyond that, correct?
So what, what typically happens is the deducts are done in the following month from when they occur, and then at the end of the season, we sum total the penalties that are associated, and then we discuss it individually with the contractors.
All right. Are there any other questions?
So just to support what you're saying, Mr. Weber, so what would happen in many situations and why we have a often taxed and very talented transportation department here in the district? So let's say bus company ABC is supposed to pick up an orange bus at Sharaw School, and they don't have the driver for it, whether through health or staffing or whatever, and they call, they say, you know, usually that day, that we don't have a driver for today and maybe the next three days. So if we can't get another contracted driver or someone who has the CDL within our own district to pick up that route then, what happens is that our drivers do their own route that they're assigned to, drop off the kids at the school, and they go back out and get, pick up another route that wasn't there. And that's what has resulted in a lot of the latenesses that we, we hear from with parents, and while we appreciate their patience and support, it's, it's not always easy to deal with that. But our, our drivers on a particular day are picking up on a minimum of five routes a day to 12 routes that they're doubling up on for their own, their own runs to get our students to school. And we were operating a tier system, three tiers. So there's a high school tier, middle school tier, and elementary school tier. So if that ABC company comes in, it's usually coming in for three tiers. It does a high school run, a middle school run, and if that driver never shows up, well, that, that means our drivers are now doing double of those tiers for three tiers. So, very taxing, and we're lucky to have the staff that we do have.
Okay. Yeah, roll call.
Mr. Marqueta?
Yes.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Solikowski?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Resolutions one, two, and three pass.
Okay, item number 25, Roman numeral 25, the supplies, equipment, and services, only one item. I'll accept the motion to go forward with it. I'll make a motion to go forward with it. Is there a second?
Marqueta, second.
Are there any questions on the one item?
Yes.
Go ahead.
What is it?
I didn't know there was a web filtering thing named after Palo Alto, California, so I can't answer.
No, there's web, web filtering for the school district. So filtering means it protects the integrity of our system and prevents unwanted software from being utilized in the system. I mean, that's, that's a finance guy explaining it. The technology probably-
No, I just, just wanted, just wanted, you know, inform the public of what we're spending $16,000 on, that's all.
At least it has a name for the software state, so that's appropriate.
So, under SIPA, it's a Child Information Protection Act. You have to have web filtering and a firewall within your school system so that students have difficulty, if not can't, get out to certain things that you want to protect them from, just like you would want to protect them from at home. Now, over the course of many years being in education, you have some students who are very, very tech savvy, and they'll find their way even around firewalls. But the other portion of it, too, is that you also want to protect outside agencies coming in to take student dat- student data, personalized information, or to ransomware attacks. So these are all things that we use this to protect ourselves from.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Roll call.
Mr. Marqueta?
Yes.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Solikowski?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Abstain.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Resolution one passes.
All right, Roman numeral, item 27, 26 rather. All right, so one, two, three, four, five, six items. Is there a motion to go forward?
Marqueta, motion.
Second, is there a second? If not, I'll move it. Discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Solikowski?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
No for one, yes for the rest.
Mr. Marqueta?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Resolutions one through six pass.
All right. All right, moving on to Roman numeral 37, Board Secretary and Board Business, items one, two. I'll move it. Is there a second?
Marqueta, second.
Discussion?
I'd like to separate them for discussion.
All right, which item?
Well, there's only two, so.
We'll pick one.
I'm separating one from two for discussion.
Okay.
If you wanna start with one, we can start with one.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. With regard to the committee list, or rather, assignments as they've been referred to, Mr. Weber, I sent you quite a lengthy email to which I did not get a response regarding how these committees came about. While Mr. Parton has said that there is no actual policy regarding this, it has been the tradition for as many years back as I can remember, and not just the years that I've been on the board, that the president reaches out to the members of the board and asks for their preference for committee membership and committee chair. And while not everybody can get everything they want, the courtesy is extended to every board member. It's pretty clear that that did not happen in this case. You have some board members who are on five committees. You yourself are chairing and/or are the liaison to five. As Mr. Lewis pointed out, except for a co-chair, none of the women on the board are chair of any committee. And I just wanna know how you came about this particular list of assignments.
Well, I went back through my hoarder-like emails, and I have not found ever that I received any document from a past president asking me what committee I chose to serve on. And a specific example of that is, I had served on a long-range planning committee for 15 years, from 1986 to 2001, and I was unelected in 2000, so I didn't get back on until 2008. And I was never asked for any committees, that I have any record in my emails. That's the end of there. I thought, I, I chose to add people on based on who I thought would fit on the best on the committee, and who had, in my mind, my assessment, had, had done a good job on other committees. And that's, that's the first I made from my, from all of my selections.
Okay, so I'm just gonna use one committee as an example. The Community Relations and Engagement Committee, which I basically founded and have chaired, and have spent many years before I was on the board and while I'm on the board cultivating relationships with key members of the community in order to improve the board's standing in the community. You chose to take my chair away, gave it to somebody who has no relationship, no offense, with any of these people.
The chair is the board's chair. And just as a long-range planning committee, it's not mine to demand, even though I had been on it for-
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Even though I had been on it for 50 consecutive years and leading up to the referendum, as you well know. And basically, based on my 30 years around the Board of Education process, I made my selection on what my experiences taught me and what I thought was best for the district.
Okay, so you think it's best that just two seasoned board members are not on hardly any committees and don't chair any committees?
I will reiterate what I just said. I thought I made the best selection based on my experience of who should be chairing and who should be serving on the committee. I've always gotten negotiations, which is the one that requires the most time and the most meetings traditionally in a negotiation issue. Nobody asked me, they just gave it to me. But I accepted it, so I stand by my recommendations.
Can I?
If I, if I might, I was, I was, I think I was addressed there in, in your comments, Mr. Weber, as I was the president last, last year, and I did reach out. You and I did exchange emails, and you told me you wanted to, I don't have the email in front of me, but you said you wanted finance and operations and negotiations and one other meeting I don't remem- one other committee I don't remember. And I placed you on two of the committees that you asked for, giving you the chair of negotiations. So, and I, and as a matter of fact, the finance operations that you were on, we had a meeting that you didn't even attend. So, you know, you were given an option, and I did take your, your requests into consideration. So I'm not quite sure how you can sit here and say that I did not reach out to you, because we did have an email exchange, and I will find that email.
We also had long-range planning disasters for the couple of years that people were there, and didn't make any recommendations, but, and I'll check my emails as well. If I find it, I'll be happy to tell you I did.
But can't all board members be present at these committee meetings?
If, if they're properly advertised, they can be, otherwise, they can't.
All meetings should be properly advertised.
They're all supposed to be properly advertised.
Right, so then, I mean, you could still have your input, right? Like, the board, the board could still come together at these committee meetings, and everybody that wants to input something will input it, right? So I mean, what does it matter who chairs what?
Well, you're kind of missing the point respectfully, and I just have one more thing to say. In the past several years, presidents have not made themselves chairs of five committees. So based on what you're saying, you made your decisions based on what the people that will serve best, then you think you're the only one who's going to be able to serve the community best in all of these seats. I just wanna remind you that you're one of nine people, and a president is elected because somebody needs to run the meetings. This is a body of nine. Each person carries an equal vote. It's not a dictatorship.
Well, we won't be voting in any of the meetings if we have nine people, it's just a word, otherwise.
I think you did a good job.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Weber, on the curriculum this year, what I'm gonna do is move-
You know how many times he's been on the board? Well?
All right, let's move on.
Okay, getting back to the curriculum meetings, I'm gonna be moving that meeting from school to school. I'm not just gonna keep it over here at the administration building. So I will communicate with different principals and ask them if we can use their building for certain meetings. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the items? Hearing none. Roll call.
Mr. Solikowski?
Yes.
This on number one only. Number one only.
On number one only, Mr. Solikowski?
Pardon?
On number one only?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
No.
Mr. Carroll?
Let's get Ms. Callie.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Callie?
No.
Mr. Carroll?
No.
So Giordano?
No.
Mr. Marqueta?
Yes.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
So we have a tie.
Just for those of you keeping score at home, this is an acknowledgement. This is not a real vote. This was placed on by the administration in response to board members' inquiries about needing clarification for the public and for themselves about who's on the committees, but bylaw 0155 does control, and the committee assignments are what they are.
Discussion on item two?
Um, I have, like to just discuss it, I guess. So, the resolution basically, can you, like, what and why? Like, what is it and why exactly? Just, just for the, like, for discussion purposes.
Okay. So what it does is it celebrates everything that we're already doing with special education, and the why is because it made me happy, and I just kind of wanted to move forward and highlight and make sure that we are, have, have what we're doing in writing, so that we could kind of go back to something. This isn't a policy, this isn't, it's already law, so it was just, that's, that's it. That's it.
So the, just the part where it says, "Every effort to use language that describes the person first," what does that mean?
So, person first, language means that we identify, so you would identify me, Teresa, not identify me as Teresa the neurodivergent or something, whatever the disability might label.
So now, just disabilities, though, right? We're not talking like they, them?
Correct.
Correct.
Furry, stuff like that?
Yep, not, just.
Okay, I'm okay with that. So now, but doesn't that, wouldn't that open the door for that?
Um, I don't think so. I have the policy from another state that I borrowed it from, if you'd like to see it.
It's fine, no, listen, wherever you got the, you know, you got the good ideas, you definitely, if it works here, it works. I'm just, because I, I don't really believe that that's educational as far as the pronouns go. That was my concern, was if it opens the doors, it opens the doors, so.
Oh.
I mean, it's, I mean, would you be open to just removing that part from it?
I would not.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I think, I think, just to go back to that, you know, I don't think, honestly, I don't think that the intention of that, that bullet, Mr. Marqueta, is to open that door for the they/them pronouns. I think it's really the intention of that, that line is to just make sure we acknowledge the individual rather than their disability. I think that's more what that line is talking about. I don't think it's, I don't see that as opening the door to that at all. You know, not at all, I really don't, you know.
I disagree, but I respect your opinion.
All right, in the, in this case, our attorney did look at the proposal, and he's made some comments. I'd like him to share those with the board and the public.
The board members, you all received two versions in your Friday packet. There was the original one that Ms. Burns has suggested, and there's one that was, a little bit of legalese was added. And that appears really in the third bullet point of this proposed resolution. This is not a board policy, and inclusion is a matter of state and federal law. Every kid in this district has the equal opportunities to every part of your athletic, artistic, and educational program. But I don't want you to ever pass a resolution that appears to provide something that it can't provide. So the language that I have placed in front of you for consideration, and it is a board decision, but it's for your consideration, is that in the third bullet point, it would say, "Opportunities to participate in all school programs, including extracurricular activities and interventions, and the opportunity to apply, try out, audition for selection-based programs and activities shall be accessible to all students." That is language that's applicable not to any subgroup of your student body. It's applicable to every student in your student body. No one is entitled to be on varsity soccer. No one is entitled to be on AP English. No one is entitled to be on indoor percussion. Everybody's entitled to try. And I think it's important that we don't pass a resolution as a board that somebody could misconstrue unfairly to them and to their child to say, "I have the right to participate in this." You have the right to access, no matter who you are, no matter which student we're talking about, or if we're simply talking about every single student in this district, because they all do have equal opportunity. But no guarantee. And I just don't want the board to place any parent or student in an unfair situation. So that's the genesis of that language.
Any other questions? Roll call?
Well, hold on, roll call on what?
On as presented by Ms. Burns.
Now, I would suggest that, at least for the third item, that that, that the current motion be amended.
Well, then, I was wondering, there was no input from the public on Mr. Parton's version. So can we, I make a motion then to postpone it and allow for public access to the new version.
Yes, you certainly can make a motion to table it, and it would be voted on at the next agenda meeting.
Okay, I make that motion.
I'll second it. I don't need to second, but I should, I did. Table only requires one person. Roll call on table. Roll call on table.
So this is a roll call to table item number two?
Well, let me clarify, because I don't want to get in a messy situation. So my motion is to table this vote for now and present Mr. Parton's version at the next agenda meeting.
Right.
Yes, that's fine.
So, Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Calley?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Marqueta?
Yes.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
So the motion to table number two passes.
All right, we'll open hearing residents on any school district issued.
Hi, I'm back.
Yes, I'm back.
So I just want to clarify something to Mr. Marqueta. Thank you for agreeing to be a liaison, in addition to Mrs. Burns for our CPAG. I welcome you attending meetings, learning about the disability community. It's not about pronouns in this condition, in this situation. What we're talking about is disability community and the segregation, the marginalization, and all of those things that impact students with disabilities. My child being one of them. We have 1,500, 1,600 classified children in this district. They deserve to have a voice, they deserve to be heard, they deserve a seat at the table. And that's what this inclusion resolution is about. So it is about education, and it's also about the inclusivity of all children in this district. Thank you and have a good night.
Hi, Scott Mizella, Public Relations Coordinator. I just want to let the board know, I sent you an email about this, but if you want your committee meetings advertised on all three of our social media sites ahead of time, they're gaining, they're gaining traction with the public, so they might want to do that. My next comment is Scott Mizella, the seventh grade social studies teacher, and sixth grade social studies teacher. My classroom is open and safe for every single student, no matter what your pronoun is. When I saw where that was going, I don't know if anybody else saw that, and I heard laughter in the audience. We see every day the horror that some of these students have to face. And if you were in my shoes or any of my colleague's shoes, you would not laugh at that. These pronouns are important. I don't really care what anyone's sexual orientation is or their religion or their color or their creed. I'm their teacher, and I will do my absolute best for them every single day. And I know every one of my colleagues will too. So I just wanted to say that, because I felt like there's a little bit of negativity there amongst the chuckles there. So thank you.
Seeing no other hands, I'm going to close the public session. And we will make a motion to go into closed session.
Well, you, you have. Old business.
You have old and new business first, but, yes, we'll make a motion to go into closed session in a moment.
He's rushing through that.
Oh, okay. Is there any board member that wants to bring up anything under old business?
I would like to know what the plan is for the strategic plan. We had, we had a plan in place. It was a four-month plan that was put together. We had meetings with our previous board. And it's about a four-month plan, you know, to put it all together. And it expires in June. So I was just wondering, Mr. Weber, if there, if we have any kind of strategic planning meeting?
Inform me that there is a plan in place going forward. Is there sort of a plan?
No. Excuse me, Mr. Weber, if you don't speak into the microphone, we can't hear you. Thank you.
There's no plan in place, Mr. Weber. What I was, what I meant, what I'm trying to say is that we previously, the board, all of the board, you included, met with, do you remember when we had that meeting with Mary Ann Freedman, our New Jersey School Boards?
Yes, I was, I was not there, as you know.
No, it was a meeting of the whole board. You were there. It was, it was a Zoom meeting. It was a committee of the whole. You were there.
The, we have two things that are coming up simultaneously. One of them is the five-year.
You have to talk into the microphone.
Is the five-year plan.
Yes, and that expires in June.
Yes. And the other is that it's going to be a little difficult to get through the plan there until we really resolve what our budgetary issues are. Because we may have cost purposes coming up during that process. As you know, we're in the process of working on the budget now to make the presentation to the county. The state aid number has not been given to us. It was promised on February 24th, and it has now been moved back to March 7th, which was the date we originally had to file with the county. That is now pushed back to get just the information from the state on March 7th. So basically, we have one thing coming with the mask, and that's the next day. And then the final budget has to be approved. And then basically, we can, you know, we can start doing the process, and I'll be happy to have a long-range planning committee meeting. But, and I will set one.
Okay, I mean, I think that the two things can be done simultaneously, because I think what, what part of the plan was, was a lot of community input, which I think would be helpful for us moving forward with our budget. So, I mean, I think that they can be done simultaneously.
Well, I, I hope that the community input is more sufficient than a cheese break school had.
Well, this is part, the strategic plan is an actual plan, and the, and it's run by our New Jersey School Board rep, Mary Ann Freedman.
Yes, but it's the district's plan. She doesn't run that for us.
Okay, I understand that.
Can I just say something? Am I allowed to, am I allowed to respond to anything that was said to me?
You always have to.
Okay, so the first thing I wanted to say is I was a learning-disabled student. I was placed in trailers, I was removed from class. I understand wholeheartedly what these kids go through. I was that student, okay? So in no way, shape, or form would I ever, ever try to diminish what a special education student can do. What I believe with the pronouns, and I'm, Mr. Mizella is a fantastic teacher. I know my son loves him, and he comes home and he talks positively about him almost every day. What I believe with the pronouns is why are we celebrating that? When I was growing up, if you were gay, you were gay. I went to an all-boys high school. We had gay children in the school, and it was okay. I had black kids in my school, and it was okay. Why are we celebrating that so much to the point where it has a possibility, it has a potential to make other children uncomfortable? So that is my only issue with that. If, if somebody wants to live a certain lifestyle, then that, that's, if that's who they identify as, then go for it, do it. But we shouldn't be in a position to celebrate somebody just because of a way that they live their lifestyle. To me, that, that is, I don't agree with it. That was my only issue, as, again, so a learning-disabled kid went through the Catholic school system, so I get it, okay? I'm not, ever would take anything away from a disabled child or anybody that has any sort of learning disability. So just wanted to clarify, thank you.
I think we should celebrate all children.
Any other old business? Hearing none, we'll move on to new business.
Um, yes, okay, so to the policies that were removed today. It was a very good job for the board to do that. I'm glad it was unanimous. And hopefully, as we get more things removed from the state mandates, we'll be able to remove those as well. Hopefully, there won't be another fake emergency declared during that time. And until March 7th, protest at your own risk. And another thing I want to bring up is that the budget hearings are going to be pretty soon. And there's going to be a bill introduced in the New Jersey Legislature that will try to allow us to spend money from capital reserves to general fund items. It was similar to Assembly Bill 5279 from the last legislative session. And so make sure you get on top of your legislators, Thompson, Dancer, and Clifton. CC me if you want, and hopefully, we'll be able to get that on a roll before March, when we have to send the budget, and May, when we ultimately approve it. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Sittidino and I spoke about the fifth grade, like, school trip that's on the table of a maybe contingent of circumstances, if we can, I guess, let the public know what the options are or forecasting.
So as some of the challenges we face, you know, even coming out of the pandemic throughout the course of this year, they're kind of well-documented through board actions and conversations. Not only we have a transportation shortage, but a nursing shortage as well. And through regulations, with any student who has a malady or health ailment that would require a nurse or chaperone to go, it makes going forward with the trips at this point at a point where we want to be hesitant before we just open the door to all field trips. We believe the priority is in-class learning, in-school learning, and we're going to get to that normality. The challenges that we face is when you can't just say, "Well, we're going to allow this group to do a field trip and not that group." On a, on a general day, in springtime in Old Bridge, there's anywhere from eight to 12 field trips out. You know, consider them the size of the high school, consider the middle school, and then 11 elementary schools. So you want to make sure you have nursing coverage for that. You want to make sure that you have transportation coverage for that. We talked about the three tiers. So by the time a transportation drop-off at the elementary school around 9:05, and if you was, let's say, an elementary trip out of town, to get them out to where they're going and to be back for a pickup, you'd have the concerns of they need to be back here on the high school property by 2 o'clock at the latest. So they're already in the queue, ready, getting ready to pick up the students. And that's the hard part of it. Then, then they have to go through the middle school and the elementary, the elementary school. Can we look at in the future of private buses? We can, but they get to be expensive right now. Their rates have gone up tremendously since the pandemic, as well as they have shortages. The other question we have, has been asked is, can we use parents as chaperones for the students who have those health conditions? And as a practice, we, we try not to do that, because it becomes a point where it's unreliable in certain situations. If I know that I'm the superintendent, I'm overseeing, you know, five field trips that are going out, and let's say three of them need nurses, I know that I'm going to staff those with nurses. And even if a nurse calls out sick that day, I'm going to find a nurse, whether through my own staffing or private or, private agency, because it's my responsibility to do so, and I can direct a nurse to go. I can't do that with a parent. So let's say that everybody in this room right here is going on a field trip. You're all excited. Fill out your permission slip, you go into Liberty Science Center. But one young lady in the class has diabetes and can't go without some medication going with them. Our only choice, according to policy, is that a nurse go or that parent go, if that parent can go. We get all the kids' field trips in, you're all excited, you're ready to go. That morning, get a phone call that that parent had an emergency at work, has to report to work, death in family, illness, what have you. And then I have to say, "Well, we can't, we can't go." Or if the case is that, you know, if that parent can't go, then I'm kind of telling, you know, I don't want to say to everyone, "You can't go," everyone as a whole, because the one child with the health parent, parent can't go. So that's why we rely upon nurses to do so. It makes it much more reliable and equitable across, and we're not putting the burden of having to chaperone onto a parent who already has a child with a medical disability. So our goal is, as we reassess this, is that we get past the seventh with the, with the masks coming off. We look at our data, we look at everything, we're going back towards normalcy. Some of the, like, event at the high school, because they're, they're, I guess, I would say, milestone events are disappearing, you know? They only have so much time with us. They have about a few more months with us, the seniors. So looking at what their event will be might be the priority for a trip, because once they leave us, they're gone. The rest of our students have a few more years with us, and we can work towards that normalcy with field trips. So that's the priorities that we're looking at and the steps that we're taking to get back to that level of normalcy and get back to the point where our students are enjoying the field trips. But again, our first priority is enjoying our time in school and getting to the point where we're, we're learning and making up for some of the gaps that we may have experienced. I don't know if I answered all the questions. Anyway, if you have more, just reach out to me, email me a question. I'm happy to respond to them.
I just, yeah, just one more thing. I just wanted to thank Dr. Tui for your presentation earlier. It kind of came and went. My biggest concern was the kids having their faces buried in these computers through the pandemic, and I just thought that that was going to be the fall going forward. So I guess I had to be careful what I asked for, because that was a detailed presentation of what they're learning, which is great. So I guess I got to accept that we got to move forward with technology and no more blackboards and chalk and cleaning the erasers. So thanks again for the presentation.
I.
Board members, turn, Mr. New.
I just wanted to mention the musical at Carl Sandberg is coming up, the 31st of March and the first and second of April. And tickets are available online. Thanks.
Great, thank you. What is the, what is the production going to be?
I'm sorry, what?
What is the production going to be?
What is it? I believe it's The Descendants. I believe it's The Descendants.
Okay.
I don't know what The Descendants are, so.
Based on a Disney format, I believe.
That's all of us in the room, or somebody.
Mr. Weber, can I just say a few things?
Sure.
I have the microphone open. I, too, want to congratulate Coach Lonzo Farmer on a great career. It was probably 2012 or so when I first became principal at the high school. And I met with him and Vice Principal Sassa, and we were on the field looking at it, and I said, you know, you think of areas around the country where there's generated great quarterbacks and, like, Dan Marino and Joe.
Joe Theismann.
Joe Theismann. I really wasn't thinking him, because he's a little South River guy. But I was thinking more that some of our Pennsylvania quarterbacks, Joe Namath, and West Virginia quarterbacks, so forth. And what happens in those areas is that everybody from the town comes out on Friday night to watch football. It becomes the source of entertainment, the source of gatherings, the source of positive community celebration. And that wasn't something that was happening back then. You know, we, a high school game would get 800 students to come to the, to the game. It was, the bleachers were empty on both sides. That's not the case anymore. And a lot of that has to do with Coach Lonzo Farmer, the program he put together. I always say this to him, "As superintendent, you get a lot of complaints about programs. You get a lot of, you know, my son should be starting, my daughter should be the captain, my, you know." You get a lot of, you get a lot of them. Every, every tryout season, I'm ready for them. He runs the biggest program and I, by far, the fewest complaints that I get. So whatever he had done, he did it through equity, he did it through understanding and good communication with the parents. So I want to thank him for that. And I also want to commend Ms. Jean-Min Lo, she's the Chinese teacher at the high school. That was by far one of the greatest celebrations that I've seen as far as Chinese New Year. There was professional performers there. I think, I don't know how she funded all of it, but she did an amazing job, and everybody took away so much from that experience, and she really should be celebrated. So thank you very much. Thank you tonight, board, as well, and republic.
Just as, as another, reinforcing what Mr. Sittidino said about high school football. In 1993, my first year on the board, two or three board members were asked by the board to travel to Plano, Texas, which is a town of about 100,000, close to Dallas. And because they had a big high school, which we were contemplating at that point doing something with merging the high schools. So we got there on the weekend, leading up to the weekend, where the state championship was being played. Plano was one of the two teams. They played in the Cotton Bowl with 42,000 fans. That's Texas football. That's Friday night football.
I'm just going to add one more little funny, fast story, just real fast. I'm not trying to, but a few years back, a resident from that neighborhood was complaining to me, and I'm sorry if I'm offending him for this, but, you know, he said, you know, "This is crazy. Every Friday night, it's so loud here. There's kids all walking around. I can't even get back on my own driveway because there's so many cars and people." I said, "But I didn't just build the football field. It's been here for years." You know, "How long have you been here?" And he said, "Five years." I said, "Didn't you see it across the street when you, when you bought the house?" And he said, "Yeah, but nobody came to the games back then. So if you build it, they will come." And Coach Lonzo Farmer definitely built it.
Motion to go into closed session for matters of personnel and budget. Is there a second?
I second it.
All right. Roll call?
Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.